Approve the solicitor permits for surf internet.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Moyle?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Cullinan?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 12, public comment on any topic. Please.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Kirby. I'm with the Illinois Valley Food Pantry. I'm actually the executive director of pantry. We have tried for two months to get on the city council of Oglesby's agenda and we have been not received very well. So I am here to let you know why we're here and if we have to get on the agenda for next month, I would appreciate that we could get on the agenda. The letter that you have in front of you basically explains why we want to get on the agenda for the finance committee. And we are, yes, we are looking for an annual donation from the city. We're not just looking at Oglesby, we're looking at all these major cities that we do serve. And we'd like to know if I can speak longer or if you could add us next month's agenda.
So first of all, I'd like to apologize to you if it's been, if you've been waiting for something for two months, I apologize for that. I think on Friday I was first notified that, that there was a request to come on the agenda. So you probably haven't gotten your letter yet. So there's a standard letter that we had prepared by attorney. A while ago, it was the previous attorney, but it was approved. So generally when we get letters like that, we send that letter. So I apologize if I haven't even gotten that yet. But if it was two months, I greatly apologize, I would have never done that. I first heard about it on Friday. Matter of fact, I see the letter dated here, February 14th. So I generally would not, I mean, any commissioner can put something on the agenda if they want, but if you did be asking me, I probably would not. And the reason for that is, and I don't want to throw our attorney into the thing here, but because we did talk about this when it comes to certain things with donations of what we are allowed to do. Certain cities are allowed to be able to contribute to certain things like if their home rule. But maybe I'll have the attorney speak to it because he probably talked to him better than me. Not that I'm trying to throw you out there, but.
Yeah, there is no, in my opinion, and I've researched this and Walt and I have talked about it. And we've come to some disagreement about it politely, that I don't think that a non-home rule municipality has the ability to give taxpayer dollars away to an entity. It's just not authorized by statute.
But it's not illegal.
Well, it's not authorized though. And a non-home rule municipality cannot do things that are not authorized by statute.
Would you consider taking a poll with your residents in the city of Oglesby to see what they think?
I still, Mary Jo would come back to the point of advising the council that they are not authorized under statute to give taxpayer dollars away as a non-home rule municipality. The city of Peru, for instance, is a home rule municipality. They do have the ability to give tax dollars away to private entities. But in my opinion, the city of Oglesby does not.
Okay, well, you, would you want to lead by example? We have two schools here in Oglesby that every holiday they take, they do a food drive. And it's over 2,000 pounds of food that they donate. We have, what do I want to say? Groups, not groups, but clubs that in Oglesby that donate to the food pantry. And what we are asking for, because the number is increasing and it's not going to get any better. We started 42 years ago as temporary. Forty-two years later, we are still here. We deliver, 15 times a year, we deliver to residents in Oglesby. And all we're asking is for a little bit of help to keep us going for the people that need the help.
Well, I'll definitely allow anybody to weigh in if they want. My two cents is I think you're a fantastic organization and do wonderful things for surrounding area and our community as well. The problem with that is we have a standard letter that we sent out because we get a lot of requests, a lot of times for donations and stuff like that. And one of the things, my understanding is with taxpayer dollars, that's not one of the things that we can do.
Well, that's why I'm asking, why don't you consider taking a poll of your community and see what they say?
The poll wouldn't change the law though, Mary Jo. And in my opinion, they don't have legal authority to give away taxpayer dollars.
So for example, on Friday, when I had a conversation, I think Rich might have been in the room a little bit, but I had a conversation with the clerk about this. There has been things that we've given to in the past because they were different type of organization, like for example, the Hygienic Institute. Hygienic Institute, I don't even know, are they back, are they back running again? Is that something? So they used to provide services for our area and stuff like that. And then we had an ordinance that we could give them money that's taxpayer dollars because they cover a service. I recognize that even though it might not have a legal status, there is services provided. You know, this came up with homeless stuff, with the homeless shelter and things like that. That is a service that is provided that is, that our city benefits from, but I can't necessarily give them taxpayer dollars. There's other things that we can do. Anytime there's been food availabilities or something like that, we try to promote those ideas and stuff like that. Those are the things I'd rather try to see how we can support. I don't want to get into the process of something that's bending or breaking a law to be able to do that. And I wish I had a better answer for you.
Well, you mentioned, you know, you helped the Hygienic Institute because they gave services. So can you explain to me what the difference is of what their services they gave to Oglesby and the services we're giving to Oglesby?
I use that as an example because there was a legal statute about that. That way it could be done. What I would rather do is if there's things that we can help partner with for like fundraising or things like, for example, this year we gave, we are Oglesby, the opportunity to do, to sponsor the 50/50 for, for our fun fest, right? So that's how we're bringing that back for fun for them. I would have no problem if the city had a special event or something like that and you want to partner with the city. So that way it's not tax dollars that's given. That'd be the best, my best recommendation, how we can partner and help you doing your things without finding a way, you know, bending or breaking a law.
So you would consider partnering with us? And where the city can get involved for a benefit or something?
Absolutely. If there's a way that we can legally help opportunities that are doing great things for our community, I'd be more than happy to be part of that. And while I won't speak for the council here, I'm sure that they'd probably feel somewhat of that. Matter of fact, I'll give everybody an opportunity to like to weigh in on anything.
Yeah, I agree entirely with the mayor. I'm perfectly happy to partner with you guys and do whatever we can do for, you know, families in need in our community as long as it doesn't go against state statute.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right. Are there any other public comments?
Good job.
All right. Number 13, Commissioner reports. Mr. Collins.
Oh boy, here we go. This is, this is an interesting one, so please bear with me. So updates department wise, city's IPRF, Illinois Public Risk Fund audit came back and the city owes an additional $18,000. This is due to an increase in the pay of our officers and the payout of two employees who retired, taking into consideration they're sick in vacation time, as well as the reclassification of one of the city's employees. There was some talk circulating last, or this past week about late fees. The third-party payment website that we use, which is Payment Service Network, went down without our knowledge. Payments are downloaded into our system each night. For two nights, they did not download and we were not notified. There were 80 people in total who paid that did not show up as paid. But as soon as this was discovered by Patty, our staff went in and waived late fees eventually for all 80 people. So that's taken care of. I want to, I have this, I want to start off my commissioner's report, but I had some stuff before it. So I want to start off the rest of my commissioner's report tonight with a thank you. This thank you extends first to my predecessor and good Italian friend, Tony Stefanelle. Tony has been a close friend and confidant since I met him two years ago and his presence on this council will be sorely missed. Second, I wish to thank Commissioners Baldridge, McDermott, and Moyle for demonstrating their trust in me by voting to appoint me as the next commissioner of accounts and finance. I also want to extend my gratitude to Clerk Kleiner and, believe it or not, Mayor Kern, who have been very helpful in filling me in about all the different items this administration has on its plate. Lastly, I send it to all the people of Oglesby who have shared their congratulations and well wishes. Being able to sit in this chair tonight is an incredible honor and I hope to make the most of it by being, as I said at the last meeting, a mediating voice in an administration that has had its fair share of headlines, which make your friends from other towns ask you, what is going on in Oglesby? From keeping my ear to the ground, it seems that all of our people, all they want, our citizens, all they want is to not be asked that question and for this council to just get the job done. None of us up here need to be heroes or leave profound legacies behind. We just need to be competent. This is reminiscent of the excerpt my pre-AP world history class read this year from a Daoist religious text authored by the Chinese philosopher Laozi in the 4th century B.C., which reads, "When great men rule, subjects know little of their existence." It is not my intention to make this lecture on philosophy, but I would be remiss if I did not share one more quote that relates to the duties that I now have as a commissioner. It's a quote from the pastor, from pastor and the author of a number of books on leadership, John C. Maxwell, which reads, "A man must be big enough to admit his mistakes, smart enough to profit from them, and strong enough to correct them." In the spirit of this leadership, it is time for me to publicly own up to my mistakes. As I mentioned earlier in this report, Oglesby has for a number of years now been the subject of numerous bad headlines, but also a generally tense adversarial and occasionally toxic political climate. This has been evident to some degree in the current debate on the referendum, regardless of what side we're talking about, as well as the behavior of this council since it was sworn in in May of 2023. I think it was May of 2023. Okay. However, it was particularly evident in the events leading up to it since the election of 2019. For those of you who are not aware, I was more or less the mouthpiece of my father, Jim Cullinan, and his campaign for commissioner during his tenure as commissioner. While I believe to this day that in many ways my father was wrong and that the actions he took both as a candidate and a commissioner were correct, I cannot defend the example that I set as his mouthpiece. Even if you're right, you can still be wrong, and I was, for using his social media accounts to engineer outrage and animosity towards my neighbors, which seriously eroded the political climate of our city. This is something from which we have still not recovered, given what I see on a daily basis while browsing Facebook and sometimes sadly enough, from what I see in person. Not to get religious, but as Jesus Christ said in Mark 3:25 and as other great men of history such as Thomas Hobbes and Abraham Lincoln have repeated, "If a house be divided against itself, that house cannot stand." By extension, applying this to our time and place, a city divided against itself cannot prosper. Spite is a powerful force and if we cannot agree to unilaterally disarm, vendetta culture will continue to prevent us from ultimately realizing our city's full potential. That is why I chose to include this tangent in my report tonight out of a sense of duty. With that being said, it is my responsibility to try and make good for my past transgressions towards my neighbors. Therefore, tonight I wish to extend a formal apology to the people of Oglesby for my past behavior, including these people specifically, as well as their respective families. Commissioner Tom Porter, Chief James Knoblock, Chief Designate Scott Pavlock, Mayor Don Finley, Mayor Don Marvara, Commissioner Kerry Liesky, Commissioner and now Mayor Jason Kern, City Clerk Becky Kleiner, City Clerk Stacy Murdes, City Attorney James Andrioni, Radio Host Rod Thorson. If I am missing anyone else, I extend my sincerest apologies to you as well. It is my hope that regardless of our political differences, that everyone in this town can start to see all of one another's humanity and refrain from following the core example that I set and others have followed years ago. I truly believe that every one of us, regardless of our preferred candidates, issues, or referendum results, ultimately want the best possible future for our city. Our posterity deserves it, and let's get to work. Thank you.
I'm not a big clapper, but that was actually very good. Thank you. Commissioner Moyle.
So in my department, I just wanted to give a couple of updates. The entire police department successfully completed CPR certification, ensuring that all officers are trained in life-saving techniques. We were able to save on costs by utilizing the ambulance department's paramedic, Brad Anderson. So thanks, Brad. The fire department is getting new rescue airbags. This is to replace expired equipment. The police department's vehicles are getting a facelift, which I do have pictures of. Two of the unmarked vehicles now have updated decals applied. Two more vehicles are scheduled to be done in the near future. Marked vehicles serve as a visual deterrent to crime, help identify police in emergency, and can be important in legal situations, and a vital role in courtroom defense. This update was entirely funded by seized money and taxpayers will not incur any expense for this project. And then I just wanted to give an update on what our emergency services have been doing. In the month of February, the police department has responded to 50 911 calls, 42 ambulance assists, 113 extra patrol vacation checks, 655 business checks, 457 park security checks, and 118 traffic stops with 91 issued warnings. The ambulance has responded to 58 ambulance calls in the primary area, two intercepts, 16 transfers, for a total of 86 calls in the month of February. And then lastly, the fire department responded to 12 total calls, three motor vehicle accidents, one smoke investigation, three assists with other city departments, one power line down, one gas leak, and two mutual aid calls. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott.
I don't have anything at this time.
Sorry. Commissioner Baldridge?
Nothing.
Okay. Number 14, Mayor's Report. First one is, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Cullinan. That was actually very humbling. I thought that was pretty powerful stuff. I appreciate that. I will say, even though I did not vote for you, I will say it was, it was a good week. I really did appreciate having the opportunity to talk and have some updates with you. I think you had some very engaging questions. And it makes me want to engage to make sure I can give you as much information I can. So hopefully we can work together. I appreciate your input, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I look forward to the next 25 months that we have to, whatever happens with the referendum, one or another, I look forward to working with you to see what we can make the best of it. Absolutely. Number two, tag day requests. March 15th is the deadline to get them in by. So if you're an organization or you have an open organization that looks to get some funding throughout the year and stuff like that, tag day is a great opportunity that we do at the Four Corners there. Number three, the IMEA scholarship deadline is still March 14th. Again, we did have a winner from Oglesby last year. It's up to $2,500 yet. So if you haven't had to put in for it yet, please do. My son's a senior, but I'd just be too embarrassed if he won this year, you know, as me as the mayor. I know, but I just, knowing my luck is he would win. So I haven't told him to do that though. But everybody else, please do. Number four. So there is, so we've had a couple of informational meetings that Plan Commission has hosted. I don't believe the Plan Commission is looking to host another one. There is two other groups that are hosting two meetings that they published right now. One is March 6th at 6:00 PM at the American Legion, and another one is March 11th at 6:00 PM at the Two Brothers Restaurant. I would say that, just so you know, that these two are not hosted by the Plan Commission, so they are from advocacy groups from both sides. In my opinion though, whether it's opinion or not, if people are talking and people are communicating and it's respectful, it's a win, right? So I highly recommend, check out, if you haven't checked out the videos that were done of the last two, you got these other two that are available, please look at them. Try to become as informed as you possibly can. Ask questions. I know there's a lot of rhetoric online. Hopefully people can cut through the noise and, well, people have opinions, opinions are great as well, but, you know, check their source, check, check where the information is coming from. Look at the facts and hopefully we'll make the best decision for everybody. So that's really all I have. Next item is number 15, executive session, oh, I got a long thing here. Executive session discussed the selection of a person to fill public office to define an OMA, including a vacancy in public office, when the public body is given the power to appoint from the law or ordinance of discipline, performance, or removal of the account of public office, when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under law ordinance 5 ILCS 120/2C3, and the operation by a municipality or municipal utility, or the operation of municipal power agency or municipal natural gas agency when the decision involves, one, contracts relating to the purchase, sale, delivery, or electric gas, 5 ILCS 120/2C23, and finally, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C. May I get a motion to go into executive session for those?
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second, roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Moyle?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Cullinan?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. There is one action item listed after closed session. It is basically whether we're going to approve the part-time ordinance or not, but we'll find out what we're going to talk about. Other than that, everybody have a wonderful evening.
It was yours. It was yours.
I gave it to him.
You want me to stay here or pick him up tomorrow?
Oh, pick him up.
I confused it with Rich Red.
What's that?
On the, I'm just confused with Rich had versus.
I'm sorry, Mac, I can't hear you.
Oh, you're all right.
Well, I would say arguably so. If you can come in there, order a drink, and drink in there, that's a fine. There is no such thing as a bio license. True.
Thank you.
You're gonna be, I'm just, I just feel like you're gonna be so disappointed. All right. All right, we're back in open session. Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Here.
Moyle.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Cohenan.
Here. Ooh. Here. Number six, it's late, I know. Number sixteen, ordinance number one-two-eight-one-dash-zero-three-zero-three-two-five establishes part-time administrative assistant at a twenty-five-dollar-hour rate of pay in the clerk's office current. So, we did some, uh, talking. Granted, this wasn't the only thing we talked about in closed session. But, but we talked about the need and what we have there. I think we have talked that we want to create it as a flexible rate opportunity depending on what the skillsets that we get. So, I think we're gonna have it anywhere as a flexible rate between twenty and twenty-five dollars an hour. So, I'll go around the room if everybody has anything to add to that.
I think we talked you all out in there and I, I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay.
It's the right thing to do.
Yep. We obviously need the, the person. Uh, it was a critical gap and I think by this it gives us a range because obviously there's a lot of, uh, different skillsets that could be out there of what, what we could have. So, if there's no, anybody else say anything to add? If I can get a motion at the amended, to, to give them the amended rate.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, amended ordinance, uh, number one-two-eight-one-dash-three-zero-three-zero-three-two-five, which establishes a part-time administrative position, um, between the, uh, between twenty dollars and twenty-five dollars an hour in the clerk's office.
And I'll second that motion.
Right. I think that's pretty clear. Okay. Uh, roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Moyle.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Cohenan.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. All right, number seventeen, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Moyle.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Cohenan.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Hi mom, I'm excited to sign the beginning.
Tony said something.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. He was helpful. I didn't know how sensitive they were, so.
Yeah, you don't wanna be on their booming.
Yeah, yeah.
See ya guys. I'm going to eat.